Okay. Hi. This is day two of speaking in front of the camera with no topic whatsoever. So I have to build up my confidence. Um, because I want to be able to start making YouTube videos where I form coherent thoughts. Beginning of the next day on. So I need my emotional blushy here. Say hi to Melody. And yeah, today's topic is that my hair is a goddamn mess. I uh have been struggling in the hair department ever since I've come into college because um. So what happened was that um when I came to college, I came from a city called Ganganaakar and I don't know if I should like. Say that in fact, I'm gonna say it anyways. And obviously the whole ordeal about the whole like situation about Ganganaakar that Vahaka Pani is very good. Because it comes from a stream which is, you know, like the whole city is named after this guy who invented or like. He dug up the stream, I don't remember, but yeah, so the water is very fresh there and like. The source. So I like amazing hair and then I came here. And the thing about Himachal is that the water here is heavily calcified. Or chlorinated especially the hostel water. And so of course that's not going to be super healthy for your skin. Come on, of course, that's not gonna happen. Um, so yeah, my hair has. Taken the fall and it's lifeless kind of now and I'm super. Not thrilled about it, but I have Melody here and I hope she makes me kind of thrilled. Yeah, um, I've been studying pathology for my exams. So what happened today was we got the bifurcation. Basically, we have a total of three subjects and six theory exam papers. So two theory papers of each subject because the subject is just so vast. Uh, so my sent-ups have started which are basically these mock exams for our finals and so. Preparations are happening, but a lot is going on in my life as well besides from it. I'm trying to focus on studies. Um, yeah, so I started. So we got like the bifurcation of the syllabus today. Which is actually really helpful because then you get to focus on, then you get to decide what you wanna focus on and stuff and that's beneficial. So I got my pathology bifurcation today and I was waiting for it. So now I have decided to study for paper two. And I hope it goes well. Hmm, uh, and besides that, um, I guess nothing much is happening. I, oh yeah. Basically, December is the month, you know. Uh, to go out with your friends and stuff. I don't know why that is because December is usually the month of exams and whatnot. I mean see. If you're not in med school, then December is definitely not the month, month of examination and whatnot. Because then you do not have those mock exams, right? Or maybe you do, I have no clue, but. I would like to assume that is the case. So like that's why maybe a lot of people go out in December a lot because. Christmas, New Year's and then a lot of birthdays, I don't know how they fall on, they fall in December, like me myself, I have so many friends. Whose birthdays land in December and yeah, so basically I love Sagittarius people. Uh, I guess we get ca- I I guess we get Capricorns in December as well, but. Capricorn men, not good. I, uh. So. I was, yeah, I skipped college today because I was not in a good headspace. I know that's a bad thing to do, but. Considering the fabric and almost all of the classes, I think I deserved a self-care day. And I never seem to take any self-care days, so. Might as well start taking them now because then the next year I've heard that it's pretty hard to maintain your attendance and. Honestly, I'm just so tired of this whole, like, of this whole ordeal of maintaining your attendance. I do not want to maintain my attendance, come on, just. Some things are experiences that need to be had and for those experiences to be had, you've got to miss some attendance, come on. But yeah, I'm never able to convince myself to leave a class, leave a few classes here and there. Uh, so yeah, I get a bit more relaxed at the end of the semester. Not semester, basically we have like a phase by phase system or yearly system rather I would say. Because um at first it was also a year long and this year as well, the the second year is also a year long, so. Uh, I would say that we do not have a phase or a semester system, it's more of a year ba- year-based system. Yeah, and plus we have like, um, whoa, what do you call it? We have like midterms and stuff. Which is so crazy, we have two midterms. What does midterm mean? Midterm means at the middle of the term. So why do we have two midterms? Shouldn't they be called third terms? Anyway, I'm just not gonna start thinking about this, not going on an tangent. Uh, yeah, if I look, if I look really washed out, that is because I have been going through it. Yeah, and yeah, uh. I really hope it snows this year because last year we kept on waiting and waiting for the first. You know, snowfall of the year and then it did not happen and that sucked. I really hope we get it this year. I mean, it's freezing cold already, but. Yeah, I just hope we get it because I'm, I've, of course, I've seen snow before, but it's not like, it's not the same as like when you've lived there, right? See with me, it's like, um, when I was younger, uh, I used to live in Goa. And that is where the love for the seaside or the beaches spawned in me and. It's different, you know, a lot of people go to Goa and then they say that it's overhyped and whatnot, but having lived there. I do not, I do not agree with them because it is not overhyped, it's so beautiful and. You really just cannot experience the beauty if you just go there to travel because. Travelers have a different mindset than people who live there. People who live there, they get to see the normalcy. They get to see the ordinary and find the beauty in the ordinary. Um, normal life there, it's life nonetheless and. It's different from what we live in North India. Um. And I obviously have a bias towards it, but yeah, so a part of me wanted to, you know, create that same. A sort of affection or adoration for. Um, part of me wants to create that same sort of admiration for Himachal because come on, I'm a Himachali by blood. So, yeah, that needs to be a mandatory at least. Unless I've gotten a a chance to live in a place that basically I would say that I'm from if anybody asks me. So like, I need to explore it and I need to fall in love with it as well. See, I've never been a winter person, but. I feel like having lived here for like a year and a half now, almost two years now. I might be turning into one, I can get the appeal. Uh, yeah, a lot of things are super pretty in winters and. Winters are forgiven and now I say that I know with the place of privilege, but. There's a comfort in winters. Um, yeah, that's all. Honestly, I'm such a, and honestly, I just love every season, like I love the rains. The rains remind me of Goa, I love the summers, the summers remind me of Rajasthan. And I love the winters, but for some reason the winters are still associated with Rajasthan in my mind maybe because. A lot of people have this misconception that Rajasthan because it's like a desert um state, it's not that cold there, no, ah, you've got me. You are completely in the dark because it's very cold, it tends to get really cold there. Um, yeah, so I just hope that I get to experience the cold, cold here and then I start associating the cold with Himachal. That's what I want to do. Yeah, uh, so I have been recording for nine minutes now and I feel like I've run out of topics. Topics that, uh, you wouldn't be interested in. And now I'm going to start babbling more because I have set the time limit of talking to myself and the camera for at least fifteen minutes. So, yeah, um. Story time karne, nai. Hmm, pata kya? Yeah, so basically what I want to do is that I have a lot of these falls within my sentences. Obviously, a human need, like, since I don't follow a script or whatnot, I develop sentences on the go and. Because that's the thing that I really am not good at doing. Shocker. Um, I tend to, uh, be like, leave these weird spaces in my sentences and I. Do not know if other people notice it, but I sure do because it's so repetitive and I'm self-obsessed and whatnot, so I do a lot of. Uh, 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 and I hate it, it's so bad when I, uh, yesterday, when I look back at the video that I made yesterday, I. Your girl, she kept saying, uh, 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 like, come on, please. Stay put, think about what you are going to say, you can just edit it out later, but no, I want to make this a one-shot video. Uh, o- 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 okay, 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 I'm super excited, I need to tell about this. Um, basically. No free, like, uh, no promo, whatever, nothing, but, um, yeah, so disclaimer, I do not smoke, but. There is a channel, uh, on YouTube, I truly do not know the name at all, um, the name has completely left my mind. But he smokes for, like, his whole channel is about smoking, um. And the smoking is not what, um, drew me to his channel because as I said, I'm not a smoker, but. The way that he makes his videos, basically what he does is that he never edits his videos, his. Videos are like thirty or forty minutes each and I watch all of it. I watch it from the start to the end, every single time, and it's always about smoking because I think that's what his. Channel is about and paranormal activities are happening in my room as we speak, but yeah. So that was really intriguing to me because I've always been a fan of one-shot videos. Because that holds a sense of vulnerability, a sense of honesty that, you know. We lack in our medias that we consume today. You know, media is like, come on, like, every sort of media film or YouTube or reels, like, everything is heavily, everything is heavily edited and. So that, that has a charm of its own and I truly fell in love with that. So that's why I got this idea that I should maybe just start speaking to myself. Without edits or without pauses for like long stretches of time to build up my confidence because. He seemed like a person who, you know, would be quite jittery and I say it in a normal way as I'm like. People tend to be like that, so yeah, he seemed to be like. This shy, almost loner jittery man and but the way that he interacted with the camera was so natural. And I was captured by that and I really loved it, so that's what I'm trying to do here. Um, and yeah, so that was what I was talking about. Um, so, yeah, see, uh, a lot of, a lot of, uh, and whatnot. Kinda frustrating when you look back on it because it's you and you are never, you are the most unforgiven person to yourself. There are so many things that you would overlook in some details, but when it comes to you, you are your own hardest teacher. And that is a problem, but it's okay, it's a problem everyone has and it's a problem everyone must. Learn to overcome one day, hopefully. Um, yeah. Okay, so what happened was that I had this decor and then it fell apart because it was a flower. So now I have all these seeds, please, please ignore these nails that my bestie has painted. She was like, I really need to check the color, like, how it would look on you. And so she, and so she painted two of my nails because I was like, I don't wanna commit to it. I don't wanna commit to the whole hand and then, you know, have it look bad, I would not want that. So she was like, I'll just paint like your index and your thumb and I was like, okay, cool. Yeah, little did I know that I would start making practice videos and like, you know, who knows, maybe these videos will see the light of. The day, one day, but yeah, so these are these seeds that I had for decor and. There is no thing. Said called focus here because. No, so they're not focusing. Can you focus? No? Don't wanna focus? That sucks, but okay, it's okay, it's okay, so yeah, pretty bummed about that, will need to clean it. Oh, and I just remembered I have all these numbers written on my wall, so what happened was that, so then was dirty struck with these really bad rain. These really bad rains like a few months ago back when, back when it was the rainy season and. So we did not have electricity in our hostels for a lot of days, like a lot of days consecutively. Um, so, yeah, I was like, hey, what if we die and stuff? So I wrote every contact or. Uh, like my mother, my dads and my fam and my friends and a few people from Chandigarh because Seoul and I was really close to Chandigarh, it's like. I could call my friends and they were like, with me, up and on, yeah. I feel like now I have been talking for fifteen minutes and it's time for me to go study. I had started studying the heart today, or do you guys want to study with me? We could do that as well because that would truly motivate me, otherwise I truly do not study. I think I should do that, I think we should study together. Yeah, excited about that because I have not been studying and I really need to start studying, okay? Yeah, so basically I was talk, I was reading about the heart and I've already read two pages. Bravo, but yeah, so I was on heart failure, I've done the etiology, I wasn't types of heart failure. I've already done acute, um, and I think I'm done chronic as well, so yeah, uh, I was studying left-sided heart and right-sided heart failure. So the heart is an organ eventually fails as a whole, but functionally the left and right acts as. An independent unit, so from a clinical point of view that it's useful to consider the right and the left part. Cool, so we're gonna start with the left heart failure, uh, what happens is, uh, it is initiated by stress to the left heart. What are the causes? Basically hypertension, so systemic hypertension, then we have stenosis. Stenosis could be mitral or aortic and then we have I H D, just systemic heart disease. Uh, we have myocardial diseases like myocardial pathies, myocarditis and restrictive pericarditis. Okay, so I just want to relate it to the etiology that I studied earlier, systemic hypertension came into, um. Uh, systemic hypertension came into the increased work, the heart failure cause was when, uh, there was increased pressure overload. As in like in systemic hypertension, you got heart failure, but that was because of increased workload, basically pressure value. So that is the reason of left-heart-sided failure, one, and second is the stenosis. Stenosis, I, stenosis I think also occurs because of the increased pressure load and I'm right about that. Next is the ischemic heart disease, this was because of the heart failure, like the pump failure mechanism, like the heart. Heart's pump fails, so that's how we get heart failure because of ischemic heart disease, that's also the left-sided one. Then we have myocardial disease like cardiomyopathy, myocardi- myocarditis, which also happen, um, when the heart fails. Um, like pump failure and the last one is restrictive pericarditis. I think restrictive pericarditis I read in. Who, uh, what was that? I think it was impaired film. Impaired film, yeah, it was, so, so we got like all the three etiological causes here in the left heart failure, so that's cool. Uh, just gonna brush it up again, basically if it was ischemic heart disease, then we had myocardi- cardiomyopathies and myocarditis. Then we have destructive pericarditis, um, and then pressure overload, Q R G, so we had stenosis, aortic and mitral and one more we had. Uh, which I don't remember, oh, yeah, systemic hypertension, yes, okay. Okay, what happens? So the clinical manifestation of left-sided failure results from decreased left ventricular output, of course. And hence there is accumulation of fluid upstream in the lungs. According to the major pathological changes there is under, so pulmonary congestion and edema causes dyspnea and orthopnea. Okay, I remember orthopnea was when you used to sit and you couldn't breathe. I think that was it, I would have to search it up later. Okay, so we were studying about the clinical manifestation, right? So since there's a decrease left ventricular output, there will be clinical manifestations. So there will be fluent accumulation upstream in the lungs. Because it's not going to. Go, whatever, so anyways, the major pathological changes are pulmonary congestion and edema, so. If we have a pulmonary congestion and edema, then it will lead to, uh. Uh, obviously dyspnea and orthopnea, then we have decreased left ventricular output, of course, causing hypofusion and. Hypoperfusion and diminished oxygenation of tissues, yeah, exactly. So basically we have effects on two systems, one is the pulmonary system and one is the systemic, all the systemic symptoms that we're going to see. Or the systemic pathology or manifestations that we're gonna see, so what happens in the lung is that. Um, fluid is going to get accumulated upstream in the left heart failure. And so, uh, we'll get orthopnea, like we'll get fluid accumulation and then we'll have occlusion and stuff. So that is going to cause edema and it's going to cause, uh, sorry, that's going to cause dyspnea and it's going to cause orthopnea, orth- uh, orthopnea. Orthopnea, or, 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 yeah. Don't know that, cool. Uh, and the second effect is going to, second manif- set of manifestations is going to happen in the other organs, so basically the hypo, there would be hyperfusion. So that is like there will be decreased ventricular output, so there will be ischemia in the kidneys. And so it would cause A T N, which is a cutiable necrosis, then we would have in brain. It causes hypoxic and syphilopathy and skeletal muscles that cause weakness, so basically in the kidney, in the brain and the muscles are like the major manifestations. Then we have hypertensive heart disease, so hypertensive heart disease or hypertensive cardiomyopathy results from systemic hypertension of prolonged duration. Uh, and manifesting in the la- left ventricular hypertrophy, okay, so what we're talking about here is another different side. Which is basically called hypertensive heart disease, so what happens is that you have systemic hypertension and that leads to your left ventricular hypertrophy because. Since you have occlusion or like you have hypertension, so. Uh, your, uh, there would be hypertrophic left ventricle. So what happens is that even mild hypertension of like, you know, blood pressure higher than one forty by ninety M M of H T. Of sufficient duration may induce hypertension heart disease, and the second was common form of heart disease after I H D, which is ischemic heart disorder. Uh, as already pointed out, hypertension predisposes to atherosclerosis. Okay, so this is weird because sometimes atherosclerosis predisposes hypertension and sometimes hypertension predisposes atherosclerosis. So that's the thing like, which came first, the chicken or the egg? Um, therefore, most patients of hypertensive heart disease have also advanced coronary atherosclerosis and may develop progressive I H D. Okay, cool, yeah, okay, okay, I got it, so basically what happens is. When you have hypertension, you are going to have atherosclerosis and when you have atherosclerosis, you are going to have ischemic heart disease. So basically you could say that hypertensive heart disease predisposes to ischemic heart disease because in the middle we have atherosclerosis. So that causes that and that causes that, okay, cool. Okay, amongst the causes of death in hypertensive patients, cardiac decompensation leading to C H F accounts. For one-third of the patients, other causes are I H D, cerebrovascular. Stroke, renal failure, fallen arterial, nephrosclerosis, dissecting, aneurysm, E O ten, sudden cardiac death, okay, cool. So pathologies are studies, so pathologies has been discussed later, cool, so we're gonna study it later. Pathologies of left ventricular hypertrophy, which is the most commonly caused by systemic hypertension as described here, okay? Stimulus to L V H, which is left ventricular hypertrophy, is pressure overload and systemic hypertension. Both genetic and hemodynamic factors contribute to L V H. Okay, the stress of pressure on the ventricle walls causes increased production of myofibers, myofibers and other cell organs and nuclear notchment. Since the adult myo- 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 fibers do not divide the fibers of hypertrophy. However, the sacumus may divide to increase the cell width, L V H can be diagnosed by E C G. Okay, aggressive control of hypertension can regress the left ventricular mass. Abnormalities of diastolic function and hypertension are most common in hypertension is present above one-third of the patients. Honestly, this is all going above my head. Okay, left ventricular hypertrophy can be diagnosed by E C G, okay, cool, we got that. Aggressive control can regress the left ventricular mass, okay, cool, so if you control it, it's gonna go back to normal. Like a lot of it, and then abnormalities of diastolic function and hypertension are more common in hypertension and spend one-one-third of the patients. Okay, oh. So that is it with our left-sided failure and now we are going to study the right-sided heart failure. The right-sided heart failure occurs most, let me just fix my position. Yeah, because now we're studying right-sided, so I need to be on the right. Smart, good. Right-sided heart failure occurs more often in the consequence of left-sided heart failure, okay? So basically, one of the major consequences of the right-sided heart failure is the left-sided heart failure because we learned before that. Whole of the heart is connected, it's just that, um, cynical point of view says more useful if we try to find out the cause of it. So yeah, however, some conditions affect only the right side primarily, so these, uh, conditions could be. So the first one we studied was that left heart failure causes, left ventricular failure causes this. And then the second is called pul- pulmonary or we have pulmonary heart disease, this is very important topic actually in which heart failure occurs due to intrinsic lung diseases. Um, so then we have pulmonary or tricuspid valvular disease and we have pulmonary hypertension secondary to pulmonary thromboembolism. Okay, cool, and then we have myo- so basically, um, the first one we have as a consequence of the thing that we studied earlier. The next three, uh, reasons are because of pathologies in the lung. And after that, we have myocardial disease affecting the right side, right heart side, obviously it could do that. And then we have congenital heart disease, okay, so we're gonna just revise them, the first cause was basically. Due to left, um, sided heart ventricular failure, okay? The next three are going to be the lung causes, so the most important lung cause is called pulmonary or pulmonary heart disease, okay, then the next one. Uh, we could have is that, uh, there could be pulmonary hypertension, but why would that pulmonary hypertension occur? If it was because of, you know, pulmonary thromboembolism and then the next one is we could have like pulmonary or. The tricuspid valve disease, this is basically, yeah, so I misread that, this is not a lunga cause, it's. Tricuspid valve, so it's lies in the heart, so it's basically a heart cause, but you can remember it by the name because it. It's pulmonary, so it could come in the lung vela category for you to remember, then after that, um. We had ek tovo, what did we have? Uh, there was another cause, um. I think it was, yeah, obviously you get like myocardial disease in the right-hand side and then the next one is, uh, stenosis, I think. Congenital, yeah, left-to-right shunting, agar ho ja. Left-to-right shunting, okay, so left-to-right, so blood does not go from left to right, so that's the shunt, cool. Whatever be the underlying cause, the clinical manifestations are upstream to the right heart, such as systemic and portal venous congestion and reduced cardiac output. Cool, so what happened in that was that Vahapay lungs made the fluid was going for the blood was going upstream, but here what happens is. In the case of right-sided heart failure, uh, upstream of the right heart, basically, uh, it goes systemic system me and portal venous congestion. Uh, happens, or cardiac output, so obviously it reduces, so what are the pathological changes and manifestations here? First is, there is systemic venous congestion in different tissues and organs, example like subcutaneous edema, we have, Vahapay, Vahapay what happened? In the left, see, because left is lung, L lung, so there was congestion in the lung only, but here we have systemic congestion. Systemic edema basically, subcutaneous, uh. Uh, so then we have passive condition of the liver, spleen, kidneys, like all the organs, there we had one of the lungs. S I T, hydrothorax, congestion of the leg and veins and neck veins, okay, fine, then we have reduced cardiac output resulting in circulatory stagnation causing an oxia, cyanosis and coldness of extremities. What happened there, the second manifestation? Uh, the second manifestation there was ki Vahapay bhi hypoxia ho raha tha, so what was getting affected? Basically, our brain was getting affected, our mus- muscles were getting affected, I think our. Hmm, I don't know, I, yeah, so the kidneys were also getting affected, here what happens in the second manifestation is that there is reduced cardiac output. So same thing happens, circulatory stagnation happens and oxia occurs and stuff, um, cyanosis also and coldness of the extremities. Coldness of the extremities, I mean, mujhe ho rahi hai because it's so cold and I've turned on the heater so that I could speak here and not be. Sounding like a robot, anyways, so next we, uh, so there we studied, uh. Hypertensive heart disease, here we're going to study core pul- core pulmonary, core pulmonary is basically, um, the pulmonary heart disease. Um, it's resulting from the disorders of the lungs, it's categorized, uh, by right ventricular dilatation or hypertrophy, if we both, okay? So basically, the right ventricular could have gotten dilated hypertrophy or both. Has core pulmonary is the right-sided counterpart of hypertensive heart disease. Um, that affects the left heart predominantly, depending upon the rapidity of the development, core pulmonary may be acute or chronic. I just got a text from someone, so I'm pretty excited about that, but. Study. I'm smiling like an idiot because I am an idiot because. Have I not been here before? I need to stop. Core pulmonary, um, yeah, so core pulmonary we saw that could be because of three causes dilation, hypertrophy or both, right? Uh, so the next thing that, uh, we studied here is, since it's like, no, no, oh no, oh no. Okay, bye, the light is gone and do I need to take with my emergency light for like, you know, situations like these? I think I should do it. There is no other reason for me to take it out. So, time to take out my emergency light, I guess. Okay, this is like the smaller side of it and then we go. Okay, this is like the smaller side of it and then we go the other way and okay. This is the biggest side. Should I use it or like not? I'm contemplating, or should I like just take a break? I think I should not take a break because I have to take no fucking break. Okay, bye. The light came, I need to study. Yeah. Uh what was I talking about? Yeah, we were studying core pulmonary, right? So what happens is that uh core pulmonary, uh since it's like, what happened there, hypertensive heart disease. Me also, there was a hypertrophy only, right? So that's why we could just assume it to be like the counterpart of the right-type counterpart of hypertensive heart disease. So that's something that is equally as important. There, what we did was that in heart, in left heart side, that failure, we also studied like heart. Hypertensive heart disease. So here we go also to study core pulmonary, which is like a very important cause. Depending upon the rapidity of development, core pulmonary may be acute or chronic, acute core pulmonary occurs following massive pulmonary embolism. Resulting in sudden dilatation of the pulmonary trunk, conus and right ventricle. So this is the acute, uh acute part. There is a chronic core pulmonary is more common and is often preceded by chronic pulmonary hypertension. Cool. Um because yeah, hypertension, so it's going to cause in the chronic uh progression, it's going to cause core pulmonary. Fine, following a chronic lung diseases can cause uh chronic pulmonary hypertension and subsequent core pulmonary, okay. Chronic emphysema, chronic bronchitis. Basically, C O P D may we have uh a acute bronca- no, no. Do we have chronic? Oh my god, I need to get a grip for myself. I forgot what C O P D contains, chronic or acute bronchitis. Wait, it contains bronchial asthma, bronchitis, uh bronchectasis. Chronic bronchitis, bron- bronchectasis, cool, cool. And what was the one? Emphysema. Okay, cool, it was chronic. So here we have chronic emphysema, C O P D, we have chronic bronchitis, C O P D, then um okay, that's it. That is the only C O P D worthy things that will come here. Then we have tuberculosis, pulmonary, we have new conios- conios- coniosis. Systatic fibrosis, cool, and then we have hypovent- hyperventilation and marked obesity, which is the Quikkin syndrome. Uh multiple organized pulmonary emboli, yeah, this we studied, right? So either it could occur due to like a massive emboli, that would be acute. But if there are multiple organized pulmonary emboli, then it could due to uh chronic core pulmonary. Then we have C O P D causes emphysema, then we have bronchitis, then we have uh tuberculosis, which is um. New move, like pulmonary tuberculosis, and we have. That disease, the disease in five feet apart, cystic fibrosis. Doctor. Okay, anyways, now pathogenesis. Pathogenesis of chronic lung diseases as well as diseases of the pulmonary vessels cause increased pulmonary vascular resistance, cool. The more common underlying mechanism causing increased pulmonary blood pressure. Uh or basically pulmonary hypertension is by pulmonary vessel construction. Cool, yeah, obviously, so it's the vessel contract and there would be hypertension, yeah. Uh activation of the coagulation pathway, cool, yeah, this is like otterville. And obliotration of pulmonary arterial vessels, cool, obliotration, congestion, or like we will get attention, and then we have, um. What was that? Coagulation pathway, the activation, cool, cool, cool. Okay, pulmonary hypertension causes pressure overload in the right ventricle and hence right ventricular enlargement. Initially, there is a right ventricular hypertrophy, but as cardiac decompensation sets in. Okay, so C V studied like two, where we started was that. Uh systemic hypertension is a cause of left-sided heart failure, right? And systemic hypertension comes under heart failure due to pressure work overload. So another cause of the pressure work overload heart failure was pulmonary hypertension. So this could cause such on the right ventricle, uh and hence right ventricular enlargement. Initially, there is a large ventr- there is a right ventricular hypertrophy, but a cardiac decompensation sets in. And the right heart failure ensues, dilatation of the right ventricle occurs, sequence of events is summarized in the figure sixteen one five. Let me just abbreviate the sequence of events. Chronic lung diseases, pulmonary vascular disease, it causes pulmonary resistance, then causes pulmonary hypertension, pressure overload in the right ventricle. Then we have right ventricular failure and right heart failure, and then we have core pulmonary, okay, cool. In summary, in early stage, the left heart failure manifests with features of pulmonary congestion and decreased left ventricular output. While the right heart failure presents with systemic venous congestion, which is a edema. And involvement of the liver and spleens, C H F combines the features of both left and right failure, congested arteries, okay? So one thing I forgot here, okay, so this was basically the type which we could do later. But uh so we studied acute and chronic heart failure, we studied right ventricular and high, uh right side and left side heart failure, and the next one is. And the last one is backward and forward. So mechanism of clinical manifestation resulting from heart failure can be explained on the basis of mutually interdependent backward and forward failures. Backward heart failure according to this concept, either of the ventricular fails reject but normally resulting in the rise of endastolic volume. Which is the volume left in the ventricle, ventricles after the pumping in the ventricle and increase in volume. And pressure in the atrium, which is transmitted backwards, producing elevated pressure in the veins. Okay, but the forward heart failure according to this hypothesis. Clinical manifestation result directly from failure of the heart to pump blood causing diminished flow of blood to the tissues. Nothing went inside my brain. Clinical manifestations result directly from the failure of the heart to pump blood causing diminished load of the tissues. Especially diminished renal perfusion and activation. Okay, cool. So what was happening there in the, in the. Forward failure, no, in the backward failure, what was happening was that was like really complex. So you could think about it like. When you go to a website, what you see is very simple. What was happening in the back end of it, that part is really complex. So you could see that the backward heart failure is a complex thingy. Wherein like, you know, it could lead to, it could lead to like a increase in the endastolic volume. And then increased pressure in the atria as well, right? So then that could uh lead to backward um pressure and elevated pressure in the veins. Whereas in the forward, uh like the forward heart failure, everything is simple, it's just because there is, you know, not enough blood going to the tissues. So that's just going to be diminished renal perfusion and activation of R A S mechanism. Okay, done. So this is done with, over with. Now the next thing is uh compensatory mechanisms, cardiac hypertrophy dilatation. This is honestly not that important, I think, but I should do it anyways. In order to maintain normal cardiac, I'll just read it out because I think this is self-explanatory. In order to maintain normal cardiac output, several compensatory mechanisms play a role as under compensatory in lashing in the form of cardiac hypertrophy, cardiac dilatation of both. Cool. Hypertrophy dilatation, then decicardia, increased heart rate due to activation of neuro-humoral system, release of non-epidemic natriuretic peptide. Activation of the R A S system, okay. According to the Starling's law on pathophysiology of the heart dilated, um failing heart in order to maintain cardiac performance increases the myelocu- myocardial. Contractility and thereby attempts to maintain stroke volume. This is achieved by increasing the length of sarcomeres in the dilated heart. But technically, however, dilatation decreases the force of contraction and lead to restored volume in the cardiac chambers. La la la. That was boring. It made me yawn. I need to finish this chapter today. I am going to kill myself. Okay, cool. I'm feeling cold. What shall I? Cardiac hypertrophy. Hypertrophy of the heart is defined as an increase in size and weight of the myocardium. It generally results from increased cardiac load by increased volume load results in hypertrophy. Wait, what? Hypertrophy of the heart is defined as an increase in size and weight of the myocardium too, it generally results from increased pressure load. Cool, while increased volume load results in hypertrophy with dilatation. Okay, cool. I did not read the entire sentence. Okay, basically, if we have pressure load, then it's more prone to just hypertrophy. But if we have um increased volume load, now it will be dilating as well as getting hypertrophied. So that's a thing to remember, due to regurgitation of the blood through incompetent walls. The atrium also may undergo compensatory changes due to increased workload. The basic factors that stimulate the hypertrophy of the myocardial fibers are not known. It appears that stretching of myocardial fibers in response to stress induces the cells to increase in length. Yeah, the elongated fibers receive better nutrition and thus increase in size. Other factors which may stimulate increase in size of the myocardial fibers. Are anoxia and influence of certain hormones, cool, causes. Hypertrophy with or without dilatation may involve predominantly the left or right heart or both sides. Left ventricular hypertrophy. Common causes are as under source systemic hypertension, which is the most common, cool. We just started it. Then we have biotextenosis, we started this as well, mitral insufficiency. Uh okay, coaction of the aorta, cool, occlusive coronary artery disease. Congenital anomaly like subtle defects in patient doctors' arterioses. Condition with increased cardiac output, thyrotoxocosis, anemia. Okay, so basically, thyrotoxicosis and anemia are the results of vol- volume overload heart failure. So that we must remember, you know, and ri- right ventricular hypertrophy, most of the causes of right ventricular hypertrophy. Due to pulmonary arterial hypertension as we studied before, so core pulmonary. Then we have pulmonary stenosis and insufficiency, we have tricuspid insufficiency, which was studied pulmonary and tricuspid and core pulmonary. These were like the first three, first two lung-related who. Reasons and then we have tricus, okay, that's done, mitral stenosis or insufficiency and or. Left ventricular hypertrophy, right, exactly. So it could be another cause, cool. This is pretty easy to remember, cardiac dilatation. Quite often hypertrophy of the heart is accompanied by cardiac dilatation. Stress leading to accumulation of excessive volume of blood in the chamber of the heart causes increase in the length of myocardial fibers and hence cardiac dilatation. As a compensatory mechanism causes. Accumulation of excessive blood volume within the cardiac chambers from the following may result in the dilatation. Okay, so if there is too much blood in the, you know, cardiac chambers, then. But like, why is there too much blood in the cardiac chambers? So those are the reasons that are saying now, okay. So the first is valvular insufficiency, of course, and we have left-to-right shunts. What did we have there? Um. When we were talking about shunting, where were we talking about shunting? Yeah, we were talking about shunting in the causes of right heart failure. So there also we have left-to-right shunting, here also we have left-to-right shunting, um. Then we have conditions with high cardiac output like thyrotoxocosis, A V shunt. Myocardial diseases, systemic hypertension, cool. Okay, morphological features, now we're talking about that. Hypertrophy of the myocardium without dilatation is referred to as concentric, but when it is associated with dilatation now. See, without dilatation occurred when there was pressure overload. So that was called, what was just concentric something? Uh yeah, concentric, whereas uh when it is associated with, associated with dilatation, it's called eccentric. So the most significant finding in marked hypertrophy of the heart, chief of the left ventricle, is that the weight of the heart increases from five hundred gram or more. Like the normal was three hundred and it increases to five hundred or more. In left ventricular hypertrophy, thickness of the left ventricular wall increases from its normal thirteen to fifteen millimeters up to twenty millimeter or more. Okay, uh twenty millimeters, I truly have, I think, um the normal is like one millimeter, right? Okay, the normal is like one point three to one point five. So it increases from one point three to one point five to two. Cool. Yeah. The papillary muscles and fibercle, carny are rounded and prominent. Initially, there is concentric hypertrophy of the left ventricle without dilatation, but when decompensation and heart failure is overweening. There is eccentric hypertrophy with thinning of the ventricular walls and there may be dilatation and hypertrophy of the right heart as well. Which is basically by ventricular hypertrophy. Cool, so the main thing that we learned here was uh it goes from one point three to one point five to it goes to two centimeters. In left, uh we know that the left is obviously thicker, but the right is thinner, so. In right ventricular hypertrophy due to acute core pulmonary, there is characteristic ovioite dilatation of the right ventricle. So if it is acute, this dilatation is characteristically ovioite. And sometimes of the right atrium, in chronic core pulmonary, there is an increase in thickness, right? Yeah, so that's what we're talking about. Uh from its normal three to five millimeters up to ten millimeters, so point two, two point three. Sorry, point three to point five will be the normal centimeters and could increase to one centimeter. Um often there is dilatation of the right ventricle too, so right ventricle too, so it's called by ventricular hypertrophy, cool. Microscopically, there is an increase in the size of individual muscle fibers, there may be multiple minute focal of degenerated changes in necrosis in the hypertrophy myocardium. This didn't come on, basically, we have seen gross, gross, see, I will see microscopically. Increase in the size of individual muscle fibers, cool, there may be multiple minute focal of degenerated changes in necrosis, okay? These changes appear to arise as a result of related hypoxia of the hypertrophic muscles, the blood supply is inadequate, the increased fight size. Ventricular hypertrophy, red dot, in a part of the myocardium, will allow this change. Then we have electron microscopy, which reveals increase in the number of myofibrils comprising myofibrils. Okay, increase in the number of myofibrils comprising myofibrils, yeah. Yeah, basically, because they're increasing, right? They're getting more nutrition, they're stretching out, they're getting more nutrition, so they're increasing, so the myo. Myo- myo film, myo film, yeah, comprising of myofibrils, they will increase. Then mitochondria changes and multiple intercalated discs, which are active sites of formation of new sarcomeres, yeah, so this also is self-explanatory. Besides the nucleic acid content, determination have. Determinations have shown increase in total RNA and increased ratio of RNA to DNA content of the hypertrophy of my myofibrils. We are going to forget about this. Uh we have congenital heart diseases, should I really be studying this? This is not that important example to you, sir. I've already studied all of this before, but I, that was like months ago, so I don't remember it. I think I should just do it. Congenital heart disease, I'll just read it out. Congenital heart disease is the normal, the normalities of the heart present from birth. It's the most common and important form of heart disease in the early years of life and is present in approximately one percent of new needs. The incidence in higher, is higher in premature infants. The cause of congenital heart disease is unknown in majority of cases, it is attributed to multifactorial inheritance involving genetic and environmental influences. Other factors like rubella infection to the mother during pregnancy, drugs taken by the mother and heavy alcohol drinking by the mother. Or have been indicated in causing in utero fetal injury resulting in congenital malformation of the heart classification. Congenital anomalies of the heart may be either shunts or defects causing obstructions to flow. However, complex anomalies involving combination of shunt and obstructions are also present, cool. So simple classification is given, we are going to far for classification, we are just going to the, we are just going to go to the paragraphs, okay? Malpositions of the heart. Dextrocardia is the condition where the apex of the heart points to the right side of the chest. It may be accompanied by sinus and sinus inverters, so that all the other organs of the body are also transposed in similar way. And thus heart is in normal position in relation to them, however. Isolated dextrocardia is associated with major anomalies of the heart, which is transposition of the atrium in relation to ventricular or transposition of the great arteries. Cool. Next, we have shunts. Um first was malposition, next we have shunts. Shunt will be left to right or right, right to left. So right to, uh left to right, we studied in pulmonary, uh. Pulmonary, no. Uh. Pressure, no, right side, yeah, right side, yeah, okay. Right to left shunt. No, first you're going to study left to right. Man, this is so confusing, wait. Okay, so my best friend is calling me. Be right back.